Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for May the 21st, 2012. At this time, I would like to remind everybody in the audience to please silence your mobile devices or put them on vibrate. If you will all join us in the presentation of colors, we're happy to welcome Air Force Junior ROTC from Central Cabarrus High School.
Color right. Hold. Left pace. Freezing color.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Methodist Church to provide our invocation.
Thank you Chairman Poole. And before I get started, first of all, I'm not a reverend. I'm not even close to it. I'm just a regular layman. And I would like to extend my gratitude to the Board for inviting me to present the invocation tonight. This will be a highlight of my life and it will something that I will certainly remember. Now, at this time, could we pray? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for letting us, giving us the opportunity of meeting tonight as a group of concerned citizens and the planners of our county. We pray that you will open up the hearts and minds of every one concerned so that the decisions that are made tonight will not only be pleasing to your sight but also be of benefit to the county and its residents. We pray that you will watch over each and every family that is represented here tonight, and we also ask you to be with the ones who could not be with us for other reasons. We pray that you will be with those who are sick and suffering, and we pray that you will heal them. We pray for the unemployed and the homeless and that you will nurture them as well. We especially want to lift up the family of Commissioner Jay White, and we ask that you will wrap your loving arms around them, that you will guide them for the next few weeks as they continue to get over their mishapening. And Lord, we pray that you will continue to be with us all, be with our troops, our nation's leaders, and as we're coming up on Memorial Day, help us to remember that each and every one of our service people have so bravely fought and given up their time and their efforts for us to have our freedom. With all this being said, we ask that you will guide, protect, and bless us, forgive us of our sins, heal us from all of our wounds and all of our illness. All these things we ask in your most precious and holy name. Amen.
And I'd ask for everybody to please stay standing for just a moment. As you alluded to, Commissioner White's not here because of the passing of his mother, an extremely wonderful lady. I believe everybody that knew her knew how precious she was, not only to their family but to everybody. She had the attitude that many of us would like to have on a daily basis. That's the attitude that she lived. So, at this time, would you all please join me in a moment of silence in memory of Catherine Taylor Kitty White? At this time, we would like to recognize the members of the Air Force Junior ROTC from Central Cabarrus High School. So if you will please come forward, and you may need to pull the microphone down. I always have to, but then I'm not that tall. Tell us your name and a little bit about yourself, and Commissioner Burridge, to your left, my right, has a county pin for you.
I'm Cadet Colonel Smith, A.J. Smith. I'm getting ready to graduate here, June 13th, and I'm going to Army Basic Training July 30th.
Great. Thank you.
I'm Cadet Ashley Haas, First Lieutenant, and I want to continue succeeding in ROTC.
Thank you.
I'm Cadet Technical Sergeant Joy LaCarta, and I'm gonna go in the Air Force when I graduate.
Great. Thank you.
I'm Cadet Airman First Class Perez, and I'm gonna join the Air Force.
Thank you. And we also appreciate their two shy instructors who come with them. Central Cabarrus has the oldest junior ROTC unit in Cabarrus County schools, and I think they did such a great job that the school system chose to expand it a number of years ago, and it is a great program, and we really do appreciate you guys coming out tonight. Thank you. The first item that we have, Commissioners, is the approval or correction of the minutes. This includes the May 7th and 10th meeting minutes that are in your supplemental information. At this time, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Does that move? Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next up is the approval of the agenda. There are a couple changes to the agenda, an appointment, and one item that we moved to new business. So with those, at this time, I accept a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Does that move? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We will start off with informal public comments. We have quite a few tonight. As a reminder, if you are speaking as an individual, you have three minutes, and if you reach the end of the three minutes and the buzzer goes off, if you would be so kind as to wrap up your comments. Okay? Excuse me. First up, we have Bishop Jordan.
Good evening, Commissioner. As a reverend, I say I give a simple to the White family, and Brother Chris, I got these at the restaurant, I got spaghetti. But I challenge y'all to go to Avenue right across from Barbas Scotia and eat some of that good soul food. But today I stand on, I miss the Mother Day proclamation and the Father's Day. It's something new to us. A mother's very important, the father's important too, praise God. And this, our kids should know how very important their parents is, because without them, they wouldn't be here, and we wouldn't be here, praise God. So I ask for that proclamation, I ask for the proclamation for Remoia Day. I'm a veteran and other veterans, we, the member number one going on the glory who fight for this country. While we was at peace here resting, every day was out there scared and brave and doing the will of God, taking care of us. And so let's remember them days, and God bless you.
Thank you, Bishop Jordan. Next, we have Jim Conrad.
First time I've been to one of these meetings, and I'm a relative new president of the county, and I wanted to come and ask the Board a question. Do you take questions?
We do not. This is your chance to-
You don't take questions? You just take comments?
It's your chance to comment.
So I'm not allowed to ask you a question and get an answer?
We typically do not.
Okay.
But you're welcome to say anything you want to, and we'll be happy to talk to you after.
In that case, then I don't know what you're thinking about property tax rates, so I'd like to make some comments about what I have given some thought to as far as property tax rates go. This year, like everybody else in here, are there any other property owners here? Okay. Everybody like myself who owns property got an assessment, which I guess they do every, what, five years? Four years? So they haven't reassessed in four years, and a lot of property values went down, including What I know about math is that you multiply the value times the rate. So if my rate, if my property value goes down, my taxes should go down, right? If the rate stays the same. So the issue before the Board, I assume, is that you have to decide whether or not you're gonna change the rate in order to get the same revenue, correct? So what I'm asking you to do is to lower the rate because I'm having to do with less and everybody else is having to do with less too, right? Don't we have to, you know, things cost more. We're all having to do with less, and so I'm asking that the county do with less as well, and that means to have, to work with less revenue. So if you keep the rate the same, you'll have less revenue. If you raise the rate to keep the same revenue, when house prices go back up, human nature would be that you're not gonna lower it again. Is there any history of lowering tax rates in this county? Anybody know? They have lowered them? Okay. My guess is that it'd be hard to lower them once they're raised. And for the last five years or so, the county has spent the extra money that they got in additional revenues, correct? So they took advantage of prices going up to spend more, and now the prices went down, you need to spend less. So my expectation is the county board will do the right thing and lower rates so that we don't have to pay as much tax now and in the future. And that's what I had to say.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Larry Marlowe.
I'm Larry Marlowe. I live on Odell School Road. I'd like to talk about three different things. There's been discussion that you, we will be seventeen million plus money in shortfall if the property revaluations stay and the tax stays the same. So you're planning on going up if you have to, you're gonna have to, to have the money. I would like to see you kill the revaluations. All that's been done, go back to what it was before they reevaluate anything. You got all the money coming back in, tax rate stays at sixty-three cents, you don't have to cut anything. I know you spend a lot of money on revaluations, but consider it like you go eat after church and spend twenty-five dollars. You spend that money and then four hours later, hunger again, you gotta spend some more. So just suck that money in, just forget about it, just leave it like it was, because anybody that's practice devalue it, even if you have to sell it, you have to have appraised, so it doesn't matter. So I would ask you, just kill the revaluation, then you don't have to have all these meetings next, just rest this month, do the budget. And it's my understanding that the county, I think y'all talked about one time, trying to help all the local people in the county businesses, and I think, I could be wrong, but I heard that the jail is food that they get is processed from a company in Charlotte is, that's not correct, I don't know, but we have diners here that would love to have the jail, like Punches Diner would love to have it. And like I said, on the VA, if you've never been in service, you don't know how tough it is, especially if you get drafted. It's, you live in poverty, trust me, until you can get out. And I think, I think I was told in this county alone, we have fifteen thousand veterans in Cabarrus County, and we need this service over here real bad. So if you gotta cut anything, cut everything except the VA, leave the VA alone, and actually give him some more help, because they could probably use it. But really, considerate the tax rate, the revaluation, just kill it. Then everything stays the same, and then you don't have to do it four years. And just forget about that money, it's just gone, and we do appreciate y'all putting the election board up at Creamery, because it is real nice. And a lot of people, seniors, they said they really like going to Cabarrus, so thank y'all very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Gloria Winson-Reed.
I'm here representing the friends of the library. I want to thank you so very much for listening to our concerns last month about the library, and I'm here tonight so I might be that little spark that goes off like the light bulb when you discuss the budgets in the coming weeks. I want to let you know that libraries change lives, and I'm a testament to that. Not only does the library help people with their job skills, but they've partnered with the Cabarrus Literacy Council, so they're helping people change their lives. There are eighteen thousand people in Cabarrus County that are illiterate, so I'm telling you, when those people learn to read, that's changing lives. Also, the libraries work with all people. They work with everybody. They work people of all ages, all ethnic origins, and certainly all incomes and all grade levels. Of the seven hundred and seven, one hundred and seventy thousand people, or thereabouts, people who live in Cabarrus County, seventy-three thousand, almost seventy-four thousand people have library cards. And once I got that number, I kept looking at it, well, that can't be right, because that's almost half the people in Cabarrus County have library cards. So libraries are important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Gloria Simmons.
Thank you very much. My name is Gloria Simmons, and I have served as a member of the Council on Aging for Cabarrus County, as well as having served as secretary for one and a half terms, filling out for someone who was unable to complete that term. I've also been a participant and a recipient of both services and programs of the Department of Aging, and am indeed appreciative of all of these. In these times of financial concern that so many of us either know firsthand or know about, I have some questions about cost savings that will result from what we understand is being proposed in the restructuring of the staff and the reassignment of space usage as related to the Department of Aging and other departments. In light of these difficult times, there is the question of what cost efficiencies might actually be realized and anticipated by moving and relocating parks and recreation to the senior center versus their possibly moving to use the DSS space that is being vacated and renovated. There's also a concern about how the proposed restructuring and moving of office locations would bring about a cost savings. We also have a concern about breaking up and potentially damaging and/or diminishing the recognition and contribution that has been made on behalf of seniors through the coordination and work of the Department of Aging and providing services and programs all in one location. That has resulted in the recognition and an award from the state of North Carolina as a senior center of excellence, a place that is currently serving existing seniors and is capable of serving the thousands of upcoming baby boomers who are on the doorsteps of becoming senior citizens, and that isn't bad. A center that is a model for other aging programs in the state of North Carolina, and somebody just whispered to me a while ago, and beyond North Carolina. In light of these and other questions, I just ask for caution about adopting budget designed to support staff changes and changes in use of space at the senior center, which are not yet clear or finalized, and we thank you.
Next, we have Jean Chandler.
My name is Jean Chandler. I've lived in Kannapolis all my life. I'm a member of the Department of Aging Advisory Board, chairperson for the Family Friends Program, Cabarrus Ambassador for Senior Games, served on the Council of Aging Board for four years, member of the Cabarrus County Silver Arts Committee, helped with Caregivers Camp, and worked with all the various fundraisers. I had to write that down because I couldn't remember it all myself. I would like to speak about the loss of volunteers that we will be facing if the proposed changes take place to the Department of Aging. Our volunteers work in many capacities. At present, we have three regular office workers that work in our human service area. They're well-trained and very efficient. Their hours total more than seventy-five hours per week. I would like to emphasize that they work for free, and the hours that they contribute would cover the amount of hours for two full-time employees. This is not counting the hours that others, including myself, contribute to the human services. Our volunteers put in thousands of hours each year. They enable the staff to help a larger volume of people. These volunteers have stated that they will not volunteer in Kannapolis. The building is not a desirable neighborhood, the accessibility is very bad for the aging community. We have volunteers from Harrisburg, Midland, Mount Pleasant, as well as Concord. The mileage would also be a huge negative factor for these volunteers. I'm asking that you consider the loss of our wonderful volunteers and their financial value in making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ann Eves.
I am Ann Eves, and I am a former social worker for the city of Richmond and a retired school teacher from the Cabarrus County School System. I am also a Department of Aging Advisory Board member who you all appointed. So I come to you now to tell you that there is already, already strong collaboration between the Department of Aging and the Department of Social Services through the Cabarrus Community Resource Connection, abbreviated CRC, which Mr. Drain will be telling you about in a moment. Both DSS and Department of Aging are lead agencies in this endeavor and meet together monthly. In fact, we have a meeting in the morning. There is also collaboration now between the Department of Aging and the Parks and Rec for the senior games and for special events held in our parks and around the senior center. This system of working together has proved highly effective for senior citizens, but senior citizens have their own special needs too. There is nothing wrong with the current model of services, with the Department of Aging being a separate entity. Do not change something that is working and working well. Please recognize that the baby boomers are here among us and will continue to increase in numbers daily. The Department of Aging in Cabarrus County, just as it functions now, is better positioned than any other agency in the county or the state to serve this population. Dividing the Department of Aging will weaken the services and programs it offers. Why change? The Department of Aging does a wonderful job of providing services such as unsubsidized job placement and blending these services with programming such as the fitness programs to keep our seniors well out of homes and functioning in the community. To separate services and programming will weaken both areas. Why allow this division? Also, know that I am very, very, very budget-conscious at my home and in the county. Please look closely to see if the proposed plan does in reality offer savings. The sale of the Parks and Rec facility will provide funds, but there will be renovation costs to provide space for them. And in the proposed plan, as we understand it, there will have to be space both in the Human Resources Department at DSS and at the senior center, because staff will be providing services at both places. Our system is not broken. Why weaken it by division? Thank you for your time.
Ted Drain.
I'm Ted Drain. I'm a member of the Department of Aging Advisory Board. I'm also the Cabarrus Delegate to the Senior Tar Heel Legislature. I want to speak to you about the Cabarrus Resource Connection that we call the CRC. The Department of Aging has been working for several years to build and maintain a Cabarrus CRC. The current CRC is composed of about thirty providers in Cabarrus County: meals on wheels, transportation, social services, veteran education, veteran services, and legal services, just to name a few of those. They meet monthly so they can maintain improved services to seniors. They use the Roanoke approach in terms of making sure that seniors have access to services. They're also using the same referral system to share information about their clients with other providers. The current referral system is under review and update and revision in cooperation with the Forsite County system at a cost of around five thousand dollars, and it's working. We hear that the county is planning to completely overhaul of the referral system at an increased cost. We wonder why? I'm sure that you already know that the Cabarrus County Senior Center is the only recognized CRC in North Carolina. Why change? Will there be a cost savings? The CRC is critical for seniors, and you may ask why? Less travel time? Providers working together? Less confusion? Faster services? Less fiscal impact on seniors? We beg that you not change anything that will cost the taxpayer more or that will give the seniors less. Thank you.
Malley Plowman.
My name is Malley Plowman. I am seventy years old. I'm an active participant, instructor, volunteer, member of the Council on Aging, and member of the Silver Arts Committee at the Cabarrus County Senior Center. The senior center is a welcoming place, a building in a low-traffic area, has great parking and a covered entrance, so that people that use wheelchairs and walkers can gain access to the building without battling the elements. It is a community within a community where seniors new to our state or newly retired can find excellent services and programs under one roof. It would be upsetting at least to inform them that the services they need involve driving to Kannapolis with high-density traffic and a parking area that is very difficult to get into and even more difficult to get out of. DSS, Parks, and Rec, and the Department of Aging are all good programs. There is a reason that there are three areas of service. They serve different people. DSS clients are eligible to receive Medicaid. Department of Aging and Human Services serve people with needs but not always are eligible for Medicaid. DSS has a facility. Parks and Rec only need office space. Parks and Rec only need office space, so their building can be sold with no other consequences. Parks and Rec have always worked well with the Council on Aging, Department of Aging. Why split the center when it would be cost-effective to just move Parks and Rec to the DSS facilities instead of moving half of the senior center to DSS and then move Parks into the senior center itself? The center has been awarded the title "Center of Excellence" by the state. Mike Murphy and the Department of Aging have spent 20 years working to get the perfect blend of programs and services. Please don't undo all that hard work. I have tried, but I can't see any advantage to anyone except the head of DSS benefiting from this split. He would be over his service area plus ours, which he has little experience in. With these additional duties, would he also get a pay raise? If that is so, no financial savings would be there. This may come as a shock to you, because it did to me. You won't always be young. We want the senior center, with its blend of programs and services, to be here for you, your parents, and your children. Please, give this matter your full attention. Thank you.
Mike Plowman. Y'all might be related.
My name's Mike Plowman. I've been on the Senior Centers Advisory Board to the county commissioners for three and a half years. Serve on various committees and participate in many fundraising activities, and also voluntarily prepare taxes at the senior center through the AARP IRS Tax Aid Program, which did over 500 returns and saved the elderly approximately $50,000 of their hard-earned The county's budget is roughly $200 million, of which only 1% was allocated to the Department of Aging. Since there are 20,000 seniors in Cabarrus who are 65 years old or older and pay probably an average of $1,000 each in property tax, then the 65-year-old and older population paid approximately $20 million property tax. So, you know, do the math. We got crumbs. Now, the county manager and DSS want to take away the crumbs. The county manager and the DSS head told us at a meeting last Tuesday that if the Department of Aging was abolished, a savings would be accomplished, and nothing would change as far as services. Well, I think they got it backwards. There are two problems with their statement. The real savings have already been realized through reduction of full-time staff at the senior center and other cuts, and their plan would actually cost the county. The other problem is that the senior center's staff and participants are really like a large extended family. For a lot of the people that come there, it is their family; their children live in California, Canada, Asia, whatever. We have a large extended family, and abolishing the Department of Aging would send some services to DSS and some to Parks and Recreation, two separate entities. Now, has anyone here ever heard of a family reunion being held at two separate places at the same time? Thanks for letting us speak, and realize that hundreds of seniors in the county agree with our position, and many of them are here right now.
Next, we have Dee Vernon.
Well, I'm not an eloquent speaker, and I have to read some of the things that I put down, but I'd just like to say ditto to all the comments that's been made. And what I feel, I don't know how many people have seen our beautiful place that was donated by a lady, let's see, I got her name written down here. She donated the land for the Cabarrus County Senior Center. It's a beautiful place, and I don't blame our county manager for wanting it, and I think that's his plan eventually, is just to take over the center there. And it really is a beautiful place, and I feel like, well, maybe it's because I'm elderly, but I feel like we deserve it. We've went through a lot. And by the way, I am a baby boomer, and those of you that don't know what a baby boomer is, is the ones that's been born right after World War II. And so, we're here. You know, we're not coming. We're already here, and it's wonderful. I was born and raised in Kannapolis, went through the Kannapolis City Schools, and coming down to the senior center, I don't mind coming from Kannapolis at all, because a lot of the Kannapolis people are there. It's like Mike just said, that we all gather together and just have a wonderful time. And we don't want anybody bothering our senior center. We want to keep it. And I do feel just like, a little bit at a time, the county manager says, oh, you know, that they don't plan to take over all of it, but I think at a little bit at a time, we're going to lose our senior center. And the wonderful, to do away with the Council on Aging is just ridiculous, because they understand senior citizens. And if it's not broke, why should we fix it? Again, we're trying to save money through the different situations that our county is going through, and I understand that. But I don't feel like you'll be saving money if the senior center is taken away and the Department on Aging is done away with. Also, I want to reiterate the seniors volunteer. We have a lot of volunteers at the polls. Won't be long till election time. So, just to remind you of that. And we also volunteer at the fair and different functions that the county has. So, just remember us and think, do unto others as you'd have them do unto you. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared for this. I am, my name is Rosa Santos. I am a member of the board of the Department of Aging in Cabarrus County. I'm working very hard to promote to the Hispanic community so they can participate and exchange ideas and receive the benefits of the senior center. But I also, I know that we cannot ask questions. I hope that Social Services and Parks and Recreation also work with the Hispanic community in the senior center. That's all. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are all the yellow cards that I have. I just want to make sure I haven't missed anybody. Okay. Thank you all very much. We really do appreciate you coming out tonight, and it is always good for us to hear from everybody in the community, and this is your time to come and talk to us. We are available by email, by phone. We'll make sure that Commissioner Carruth and Commissioner White are also aware of your concerns tonight. But again, thank you all very much. We do appreciate you coming. The next item that we have, Commissioners, is old business, as you know, just for everybody in the audience. We normally get our update on our construction projects at the work session, and this month we were conflicting with their board meetings, and so we have Lynn Whitkey and Will Crabtree here to talk about their QSCB projects. I don't know who wants to go first.
I'll go first.
Okay? We're glad to have you here.
Hello. Good to see you all. I want to give you an update on our QSCB projects for Kannapolis. We have finished bidding everything, and unfortunately, with some higher bids, we did have to give up some projects. Five projects in all: parking lot at Forest Park Elementary, the parking lot at AL Brown High School, the HVAC controls at Forest Park Elementary, the HVAC controls at Fred L. Wilson, and the interior renovation at Fred L. Wilson. The good news is, we were able to accomplish our high-priority projects, such as the roof at Kannapolis Intermediate School, the HVAC system at Kannapolis Intermediate School, the lighting at AL Brown High School, the HVAC controls at Jackson Park Elementary, and the HVAC controls at Woodrow Wilson Elementary. We have finalized the bids for those, and they are in budget, and we're in the process of finalizing contracts right now. We're starting with the design phase of those, and I'm happy to report that all of our projects are scheduled to be finished by the time school starts in August. So, we will have cleared out our QSCB by August. That's my update. Just open it up for questions, if you want to have any.
Commissioners, any questions? Great.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Chair and Commissioners. I understand, I believe you are not able to bring these documents up this evening? Is that correct? Oh, just not up here? Okay. So, you're at least looking at them. That's fine. What I thought I'd talk about first is the, what we call the milestone report, which is, basically tells you where we're at on all the projects. And much like Will, we've bid the majority of our projects that we intend to bid. We do have four or five that remain. Probably the longest lead one will be the gym addition at Northwest High School. But the others, the electric vault upgrades at Central Cabarrus High School, the weight room at Concord, the breaker panels at a variety of schools, and the Wyancoff Elementary School technology upgrades, all of those, it's our intention to bid those this summer, so we should be getting that information to you very shortly. And everything else is literally either under construction on the first list or down below as identified by the green blocks. Those are the projects that have been completed already. And then there are, much like Will has mentioned, in Kannapolis, we do have our list of projects that, at least at this point, have been canceled or set on hold until we can determine where the total bidding is on these larger, more higher priority projects. We hope that we can get back to some of those at the end of QSCB. Once we bid the large projects, including the gymnasium, we'll have a very good understanding, of course, of where the dollars are at, and then we hope to go back and pick up some of those that remain. Any questions on that particular?
The Northwest Gym project, I see. It says "Design Process." How much money's been spent on that, would you say?
I think, if I look over here, approximately just over $100,000.
Okay. And that's for the design?
Yes, sir. And there are some engineering fees, soil borings, that sort of thing, survey work.
Okay. Now, if the Commissioners decide not to vote to reallocate that money to that project, what will happen at that point? That's just, you can keep those designs on hand for future, or is it?
Yes, you can. I mean, they have to be updated eventually to meet current codes when I've heard bid, but that would be the case. And going to the other budget sheet, I will say that there was a little, I just want to explain what the blue squares were, so everybody understands. When you look at that document, the blue is actually a reminder to us, it wasn't actually supposed to come over here in the document. It was just supposed to point out to staff that those are projects that the funding changes, were still pending approvals, and so that's all that the blue squares mean on that document. Everything else is, I think, explanatory, black ink representing money added to a project, red ink indicating money's removed from a project. And so, that's just a current update of funding, and we will, of course, next month, update those based on whatever bids are taken. We hope, we're trying to get the bids on the Central Cabarrus High School work, the switchgear replacement, as well as some of those, what we call the electrical panel safety project bid prior to our second meeting in June. If we can do that, if we can work the bid dates out, then we'll have pretty much an update of everything next month.
The Northwest Gym has not been bid yet, has it?
No, sir.
Was any money taken from maintenance to apply to that gym, has it?
No, sir. Okay. Any other questions?
Okay. Anything else at this time? Thank you. Okay, the next items that we have are our consent agenda items, and, I'll find, I would like to, before we vote on the consent agenda, you'll notice that we added item number 15 to the consent, and the first item is concerning the Criminal Justice Partnership Program Advisory Board. And this board is no longer going to be active, but there are a lot of people who have worked very hard, and I'd like to take a moment to recognize the members of that particular board and to make sure that they know that we do appreciate the service that they have given for quite a few years in that area. The members of that advisory board are Jay White, Robert Smith, Erwin Spainhour, Marty McGee, Tom Barcelona, Ben Small, Monty Sellers, Wendell Rumage, Catherine Combs, Mitzi Quinn, Benita McGuane, Helen Leek, William Pilkington, Karen King, Robert Davis, Jody Ramirez, Sally Coleman, David Collins, Susan Snyder, Mark Antosik, Nicola Davis-Bivens. And we wanted to publicly recognize those folks and say that we do appreciate their service. This is a board that is no longer going to be serving. Okay? With that, Commissioners, at this time, I would accept a motion to approve the items of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Okay, great. Now, we are going on to new business, and an item that I think a lot of people are interested to hear about, and that's, we recognize our county manager for the presentation of the proposed budget and your message to us.
Just for the audiences, far as what takes place now, as I read the recommended budget message and the recommended amount of budget and the recommended tax rate, the budget itself will go online immediately after the meeting, and it will be available for you to look at. Okay? Online? Amy? So, that'll be immediately available following the meeting. So, to start off with, Honorable Chairman and members of the Board of Commissioners, I am pleased to submit to you the recommended Cabarrus County operating budget for fiscal year 2013. This budget has been prepared in accordance with the general statutes of North Carolina and the Local Budget Fiscal Control Act. The board's established mission, vision, and goal, or strategic goals, provided valuable direction as this balanced budget was prepared. Included in this budget document are the expected revenues, revenues projections, and operational expenses for fiscal year 2013. During the preparation of this proposed budget, the county staff evaluated every department's programs and services for effectiveness and efficiency. Financial reductions, staff reductions and/or reassignments, consolidations of departments and/or services, and privatization of services were all considered, and implementation is recommended where appropriate. In completing this very detailed process, I am recommending a general fund budget in the amount of $200,001,113,680, which is $3,388,668 less than the current year's budget, adopted budget, and $2 million below what was projected for fiscal year 2013 and last year's five-year financial plan. In fact, the proposed budget will be $43,000 less than fiscal year '09's actual expenditures. To fund this budget as recommended... To fund this budget as recommended will require the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ad valorem tax rate of 70 cents. This is two cents less than the projected revenue neutral tax rate that would be required as a result of the county's revaluation process in order to realize the same amount of revenues received in 2012. This budget has been prepared to accommodate the current and future financial impacts on expected revenues because of a slowly recovering economy. Some of these impacts are listed below, and I'll list a few. The property revaluation process produced an unexpected decrease in revenues of approximately 12 percent. This decrease equates to approximately $15 million less in operating revenues than fiscal year 2012. At your retreats in February 2011 and again in January of 2012, you directed staff to maintain current operating expenses flat through 2016. To do this would require the Board to adopt a revenue tax rate of 72 cents. State and local economies are showing some improvement, however, this improvement is very slow and is projected to proceed in that manner for the near future. Cabarrus County's unemployment rate has dropped to 9 percent, but still remains well above the levels enjoyed prior to the recession. Fuel and energy costs continue to rise nationwide. These increases are expected to have a negative impact on the cost of county operations for the next budget year. There continues to be a slow recovery in the building industry, however, we are experiencing some increased activity in construction standards and the register of deeds. This is projected to bring a modest level of additional revenues for the fiscal year Number seven, within social services, continued growth in caseloads is being tracked. It is wise to note that the various programs within the department have experienced growth of 6% to 20% over the past three years. Funding for these programs at the federal and state levels continues to be a challenge for current and future service provision due to the cutbacks in many of those areas and increasing mandates for services to be provided. Future county budgets may be impacted in order to meet demands that this growth will require should federal and state funding be reduced to the restructuring of their budgets. With these negative impacts being recognized and considered as budgetary decisions were made, the budget was prepared in a manner to ensure that any reductions in expenditures and staffing levels would be sustainable and would maintain the level of services that we are currently providing. Noted below are the highlighted changes that are implemented, that are to be implemented if the proposed budget is approved as presented. County staff has continued to search for sustainable alternatives to provide a basic level of county services expected and deserved by our citizens. As a result, I am asking staff, once again, to continue to do more with less. Various programs and services have been modified to provide more efficient ways of doing business, resulting in the elimination of approximately 6.3 full-time equivalent positions. Other positions have been assigned different responsibilities to better fit the future needs of the county. Transportation Services, Aging Services, and Legal Services will be joining the Department of Social Services to create the Human Services Department. Implementation will bring all human service-related functions into the Human Services Center. In addition to improve staff efficiencies, this will provide our citizens access to a full-service center that can meet their human services needs in one location. Parks and Aging Programs will include, which include senior centers, will be enhanced by bringing their staff together to create the Parks and Recreation Department. This will allow for the provision of comprehensive recreational program to all generations. Libraries and Parks and Recreation staffing and operational hours have been increased accordingly to meet the expectations of our citizens and to provide for the safety of our employees. An additional crime scene investigator is recommended for the Sheriff's Department. This is the only recommended full-time position countywide. This new position will allow for the sheriff to provide more resources to the investigative and evidence gathering process. Currently, there is only one officer performing these duties. This has created staffing and operational issues as the number of cases have increased over the years. Animal shelter operations will be contracted to the Cabarrus County Humane Society. This will allow the sheriff to devote more time to the enforcement of the animal protection ordinance and will provide the Humane Society a facility and the funds to operate a comprehensive regional adoption program. Through a diligent energy reduction plan, energy usage among county facilities has decreased approximately 20% over the last few years. However, increases in utility costs have put a strain on the proposed departmental budgets. While the additional costs have been absorbed in this proposed budget, the result will be less operational money and thus will have a negative impact on services at various levels. While the 2013 budget is proposed to decrease, county funding for our public schools is proposed to remain flat, excuse me, as directed by the Board of Commissioners. You will notice that while the overall funding has not changed, the proportionate funding between the two systems will be different as a result of the changes in the projected enrollments. The county's health insurance plan experienced a spike in claims for plan year 2011, 2012 that was driven by a number of severe claims and the rising cost of healthcare. Major plan redesign will be implemented for fiscal year 2013 utilizing high deductible plans and co-insurance to reduce the renewal rate for the county and to encourage consumerism by the employees to reduce their personal claims and the county's claims exposure. While the overall plan change cost to the employees remains flat, or in some cases will be reduced, and the potential increase of $2.3 million in healthcare costs to the county was reduced to approximately 357, and we're working to get that down to 150 before the budget's approved. So, we're working there. Staff has worked very hard to make positive changes to the program and service levels by reducing overall cost. These changes are sustainable at this time, however, any future reductions will require a negative impact to staffing and service levels. This is evident that Cabarrus County has an outstanding staff that is willing to work hard and meet the demands and expectations of a deserving public, especially during these distressed economic times. I think it is fair to note that while our employees have been willing to meet the challenges and the new responsibilities of their job duties, they have done so without the opportunity for merit pay increases since fiscal year 2009. This willingness to do what is necessary to maintain a basic level of sustainable, excuse me, to maintain a basic sustainable level of service has not come without stress and anxiety. Therefore, as we move forward into future budgets, I would encourage the Board of Commissioners to consider reinstating their policies on cost of living increases and/or merit pay. With that said, I would recommend that for fiscal year 2013 only, that the Board of Commissioners create a birthday holiday, or a floating holiday for all employees. This holiday would be a paid holiday that could be used on their birthday or whenever is agreeable with their required duties and their supervisors. It would need to be used during fiscal year 2013 only. I believe that this would go a long way to show your appreciation for a job well done with no additional impact to the operating budget. I hope that you support this recommendation as well. In closing, I am confident that this proposed budget will allow Cabarrus County government to generally provide the basic core programs and services needed and expected by our citizens for the ensuing fiscal year, July 1st, 2012, and ending June 30th, 2013. I want to publicly thank Pam Dubois and Jonathan Marshall, our deputy county managers, Eric Nesbit, or, excuse me, Erica. Erica Nesbit, our budget and performance manager, Becky Crabtree, accountant, and Lundie Covington, our human resources director, and all of our department heads and employees all for their hard work in the preparation of this budget. I appreciate your hard work and dedication every day you come to work. I also want to thank the Board of Commissioners for their support and direction in the preparation of this annual budget and throughout the year. Respectfully submitted, Mike Downs. And we need to call for a public hearing, June 18th, 6:30.
Okay, just to make sure, I want everybody to understand, Commissioners just got the budget. It fits on this, nice little thumb drop. So, we haven't seen all the recommendations yet. And the way the process works is the staff prepares the budget, the county manager, as he's now done, has presented the budget to the Board of Commissioners. We will have workshop meetings starting tomorrow. Tuesday, we'll have it Thursday, so it's May 22nd and the 24th this week, next week, the 29th and the 31st. All of those work sessions will be at 4 o'clock in our multipurpose room. The public is welcome to attend, of course, any of our meetings, they're open for the public. There will be presentations from all the different departments or entities that we fund. We serve as a checkbook for a lot of entities, and so they will come and present their budgets to us for our consideration and our comments. And again, anyone is welcome to attend any of those four budget meetings. In June, we will have a public hearing on the budget at our regular meeting on June the 18th at 6:30, or as soon thereafter as persons may be heard, and that will be in this particular room. So, Commissioners, we do need to set a public hearing for the budget for June 18th at 6:30. Do I have a motion to set the public hearing?
So moved.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And let's see, next up, we have a couple items, item number two and item number three concern QSCB funding for Cabarrus County Schools and reallocating those funds in order for them to do the Northwest Cabarrus High School Gymnasium Project. This time, I would like to request, if it's okay with you, that we table those two items until Thursday's meeting. Commissioner White has been quite concerned about this particular item, and out of respect for him, I think it would be nice if we could put those meetings off until Thursday, when we would have the entire board available. So, if that's agreeable, I would accept a motion to table item number two until Thursday, May 24th's meeting.
Two and three?
Two and three.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. And let me get it. Next, we have item number four, Piedmont Behavioral Healthcare Community Operations Center, there's a joint resolution. Richard Topping, are you here? There you are. In the event we have any questions, PBH is expanding, I guess we could say, and covering a number of counties. We've gotten this request at our work session for the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners to adopt a joint resolution concerning the managed care organization, and Anna presented that to us in our work session. Are there any questions that anyone has concerning that? Mr. Topping's here, he can answer any questions that we may have.
I know in our work session meeting, it was discussed, you know, concern over the appointments to the board, and do we hear anything regarding that? I know you weren't there for that meeting, I'm not sure if you are aware.
(inaudible).
Okay.
Yes, sir, and Commissioner White's questions have been forwarded and responded in email. The way this is structured is this is actually a 54-member board covering 15 counties. Forty-five of those members are county commissioners or they're appointees from each of the individual counties. Two of those are at-large county commissioners, and then there are six healthcare professionals, and then one CFAC chair. And so, the way the diversity would go, it's the two-board system with each county having representatives. There's the diversity requirement on the county commissioners themselves, and then there is no specific requirement on the healthcare professionals. And the idea being that it was, we thought it was more important to have the expertise necessary, like for example, if you need a physician, that we wouldn't want to necessarily restrict that, we'd want to make sure we got the physician that we needed and the expertise on the board, but we'll use the bylaws to create and encourage that representation to come from across the 15 counties and the folks we serve.
Okay.
So, the idea is that in their bylaws, they will address Commissioner White's concerns.
Okay, fantastic.
That's my understanding.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Okay, at this time, I would accept a motion that we adopt the resolution for PBH.
Seven, second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? This makes it really easy when you only have three people here to say that. Next, we have item number five, which concerns the Old Bethel School property.
I can briefly touch, touch, excuse me. As you know, in the past, we've been trying to find a partner to work with on the Old Bethel School property, and since previous attempts had not been successful, we approached the town of Midland to see what their interest was. And they have talked about it internally and have approved it now, that they are interested in taking on the property with intent to pass it on to another third party to provide something for the public benefit in that area. Prior to the meeting, we had some comments or some questions, so I wanted to answer those. But what we would be dealing with is the town of Midland, any future transaction would be the town of Midland working with a third party. It's my understanding that the three members here would prefer that the other two join in on the decision, so it may be that I would recommend that we would table it till Thursday.
Okay, any comments? Do you agree to table it?
I do. I'm fine with going forward.
Okay, well, we need, we can either have a motion and go forward with it, or we can treat this one as we are, the number, items two and three, and wait on all five members, so.
Well, I'd like to see all five board members vote on it. I don't want three of us to sit up here and give it away and everybody blame us three for it.
Would it be okay with you to move it to Thursday?
That's fine.
Okay, would you like to make a motion to put it on Thursday?
I'll make a motion, we'll put it on Thursday.
Okay, I have a motion to place this item on Thursday's agenda. I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, hey, we will have this on Thursday's agenda. And next item, we have Jonathan Marshall here concerning Cox Mill Elementary School Stormwater System Construction Bid.
This was an item we presented to you at your work session. We had accepted bids on a Clean Water Trust Fund Management Grant construction project behind Cox Mill Elementary School at the school park, and those bids were all over budget, and we indicated we would be negotiating with the apparent lowest bidder to bring that back within budget. However, the way the bid was structured, and when we began to look at that, as well as some other issues that arose as we reviewed the bid, ultimately led us, under the advice of Mr. Cook, to reject all bids. So, we'll be going out, we'll actually be following an informal bid process. We've contacted everyone who has shown interest, the three that have bid currently, as well as some others that had come to our pre-bid meeting to move forward on that informal bid process. We've restructured the bid to address those concerns and those issues that arose. So, you don't need to take any action on this at this time.
Okay, we don't need to reject this or anything, just?
No, we have already informed them that the bids have been rejected due to those procedural issues.
Okay, that should be easy enough then. Thank you. Okay, next, we have some appointments to the boards and committees. First up, the Council for a Sustainable Local Economy. Christian Schmidt and Whit Moose have recently resigned from the council. To improve efficiencies and effectiveness, staff recommends the size of the council be reduced to 13, as set forth in the council's charge through attrition. Elimination of Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Moose's positions and two vacant positions are requested. So, at this time, I would accept a motion to approve the reduction of the CSLA membership to 13 through attrition. I have a motion? I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have appointments and a removal from the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. The Regional Ombudsman has qualified the appointment of Shayna King to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee and advise, Jenza Stevenson has submitted her resignation from that board. So, at this time, I would accept a motion to appoint Shayna King to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee for a one-year term ending May 31st, 2013, and to remove Jenza Stevenson from the roster as requested by the Regional Ombudsman.
Seven, second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
There also are three vacant positions on that board, so if anyone is interested in serving on that particular board, we would appreciate hearing from you. Under reports, we have a report from the NC Forest Service, the activity report, and we need to have a motion to accept those reports as presented, it is part of your agenda. So, at this time, I accept a motion to accept the activity report for fiscal year 2010, 2011 from the NC Forest Service.
Seven, second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up, we have any updates from Commissioners concerning the many boards that we serve on? Does anybody have any updates to share today?
I would just like to say that preceding our meeting, January, not January, excuse me, June 18th... me, June 18th, the Cabarrus County Youth Council will be having their annual banquet, and that's open to the public. Anyone's available to come, it will be in the multipurpose room at 5:00 PM that evening, and we would like to recognize the seniors who will be graduating from that council at the meeting.
That sounds great. We also like to, we always like to remind citizens that we have a number of opportunities for you to volunteer, and we have a number of boards and county boards and committees available. For example, the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee has three vacancies. The Board of Equalization and Review has two positions with expiring terms. Central Iowa Workforce Development Board has two positions with expiring terms. We have a vacant position on Concord Planning and Zoning Commission, their ETJ position. Harrisburg Fire Advisory Board, two positions with expired or expiring terms. Harrisburg Planning and Zoning has an ETJ position. There are two vacant positions on Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council has three positions with expiring terms. Library Board of Trustees has two positions with expiring terms. There are five vacant positions on Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. Let's see, four positions on Planning and Zoning with expiring terms. Public Health Authority has three positions with expiring terms. Let's see, Transportation Advisory Board has a vacant position. Youth Council, we're always looking for youth council members, there are six positions with expiring terms, and there's two vacant positions, and I can't remember which school you need, you have vacant positions, can you remember off?
Cox Mill, I know one position. Cox Mill, I know one position, and JM Robinson. We will have two at the end of this year.
Okay, so there's plenty of positions for people to serve on, and we encourage our citizens to participate. I think the people in the audience tonight will tell you that it's great to participate, and we like, we like to have everybody involved that wants to be involved, so please look at the list, they are on our website for your review. And we do not have a closed session tonight. So, okay, so everybody's very happy. So at this time, I would accept a motion that we recess this meeting until tomorrow, May 22nd, at 4:00 PM.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we adjourn, or we recess, sorry.